Thank you for our community and thank you forward for providing for us. We pray for vision, to see opportunities and avoid problems. We pray that you'd guide this meeting and help us to be successful in managing the city's assets. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, roll call.
Corey Roberts.
Here.
Gary Cagle.
Here.
Michael Smith.
Here.
John Morgan.
Here.
Travis Hills.
Here.
Mayor Naff.
Here.
Okay. And we have, I guess... Communications.
No, public hearing.
Okay. Okay, all right, all right, very good. Okay, so Mr. Greg Beimer is here from Okra, from Montpelier, from Klein Peter and Associates to talk about our Okra grant that we're applying for.
Okay. Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Margaret, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to help submit your application to Okra. This is for a water project. The engineer on this project is a guy named Dan Cutshaw with MS Consultants. He can't be here this evening, so I'm just briefly going to touch on what this project is going to... what's going to do. So, the city of Montpelier, November 18th, 2024, received a letter from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management of an inspection that had happened a couple of weeks prior to that date, and they found that there had been a pretty significant leak at the bottom of your water filter number one. This water was leaking out the bottom, and IDEM at that time had stated in their letter that this is a significant deficiency that requires immediate action. So that is exactly what this project is about. We're applying to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs for a $750,000 grant. What will the project consist of? Well, one, we are going to replace filter number one. That's quite an extensive process because you have to remove the roof of the building to get the crane to reach down, pick up the old filter, and replace it with a new one. And those are... they're pretty big items. So that's our first thing. Next, we're going to apply for the replacement of 651 water meter encoders. And these new meters basically will allow 24/7 access for water utility personnel as well as individual homeowners. They'll have access to be able to tell what their water usage is at any given time. Now, the advantage of that is that there are multiple times throughout the year, as you well know, that people have undetected leaks. They will now be able to monitor that as well as city personnel and try to catch those leaks before you lose more, maybe, un-metered water. And so, we're going to replace builder number one, replace those water meters, and then we're going to put in a gateway system and mount the antenna on an existing communication tower owned by the city that will allow you to read those meters. This project is going to cost how mu... that's probably everybody's next question. This is $1,294,000. So usually, once you ask that question... let me repeat that. The next question that most people have is, okay, how much debt is the city going to take on to do this project? And we are very fortunate in that we are applying for funding from Okra for $750,000, and the city has, in its water utility fund, the enough money that they're going to use cash on hand. You are going to use cash on hand, no borrowing, no rate increases for this project. And even though we're taking approximately $494,000 out of your water utility account, that still leaves ample cushion to run your water utility for any unexpected pumps going out, motors and so on, those kinds of costs that'll come up. So what we're doing tonight, this is the first of two public hearings that are required for the application of this grant. And it's basically an opportunity for the public to become educated about the project, ask questions, and give comments. So with that, let me open up the public hearing and just see if anyone has any questions or comments.
Did he... Mayor, do you have anything?
Absolutely. Yeah, I... one of our major complaints is that somebody will get a bill and their water's been running for 30 days because we only read the meters once a month and on a certain day. And it's very possible for them to have started a water leak and their water's been running for 30 days, and it's... then it's a major ordeal because they have a huge bill. And, you know, it's so... them knowing right away, it would be a major advantage to our community, saving everybody a lot of grief and a lot of money. So we... I've personally had that experience where we've had issues where a water brings a break, and just knowing right away is crucial.
Margaret, I believe we were talking before the meeting started, just today, you had an example like this.
Yesterday, there was a property that went up for tax sale that had people in the building. The timeframe for the tax sale, the owner came over, took over, evicted the tenants, and had not been back to the house for over a month. And he was... he called us today and someone had told him that water is coming out of his building, his house, and it was 700,000 gallons.
That went undetected?
Undetected.
Undetected, you get...
Right.
Well, it was metered, I would... well, they turned on the meter, someone turned on the meter.
It was... but it was undetected.
Undetected.
So, yeah, we... so...
It was turned off, so it was marked "Do not read," and we didn't catch it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, yeah, just want to make sure that the public is aware of this project and that if there's any questions or input, we certainly encourage that from any residents.
Okay. How do you read it? I'm sorry. How do you read it? On your phone?
Yeah, the phone app. From my understanding, you can download an app and then you can... it'll, you know, tell you what your water usage is. Yeah, yeah.
So if you have renters?
Yeah.
And they... one leaves, one comes in, when they come and put their water bill in their name, is there a... is there a code that you guys... that we would give them? Or we just give them the website or...
Oh, for the...
Download the app?
Yes.
How's that work?
Yeah, I would assume that's... we would just tell them that there's an app that you can download.
Would have to get them the meter number or something.
Yeah, I'm sure that... I'm sure they'll have... we'll have to give them a meter number and so forth.
Meter number or address.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's...
And the app notifies you? I mean, does it like...
Well, I don't know. I... I believe that's... it does, but I don't know that. I...
Because if somebody doesn't look at their app...
Yeah, yeah, I would... I would think it would.
Is it a free app?
Yes, yeah, and it comes with the whole system that we're going to purchase. I don't know all the... Rob and Chase would know the details of that, but they've seen a seminar on this. But it's a... it's a good system, yeah.
If you have the app and you don't look at it...
Well, that's true.
...it's your fault.
Yeah, I...
So it's the city's fault.
Right, well, and that's... yeah, it isn't, but it would make sense that you could set it.
And Mayor, I do think in one other community that has a system similar to this for the water utility personnel, they... they get a kind of like a warning or a red light that says, "This house is out of range."
Yes.
And then they can... they can also receive that trigger if the homeowner doesn't catch it.
Yes.
That's how we could have caught this one today.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we had it marked off. It's still going to read if it's signal... if it's still going to...
As a signal, yeah, yeah, so that's...
Yeah.
So I know, it's... it would be a major upgrade to our community. And I... you just hate these stories when people come in and they're, you know, their water's been running for several days and they didn't even know about it, and then... so... and then everybody loses because we lose a lot of water. We usually end up writing off a lot of water or... and so forth, and they end up having to pay some, and so it's just... this would save us a lot of money and a lot of grief.
Can I ask, did the state give us a timeline that this had to be corrected?
They did not.
Okay. Because if we don't get the Okra grant, like, then we're on the hook for another $750,000 that has to be fixed, or we're just going to keep losing money.
Or we could reapply.
Yeah, I... and I talked to our grant writer, and he feels confident, so as much as he can take that to the bank.
For that 100 times.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
And to go along with his question, what's the breakdown? I mean, repairing the filter is so mu... because all we're getting is a total cost. Do we have a breakdown of how much the app system's going to cost, how much the filter system's going to cost?
I do, and I... it's tucked away.
Okay. I'm just curious, because if we don't get the grant, I think fixing the filters is more important than getting wireless training apps.
Your bid was for the filters for $400,000?
Well, it was, yeah, I don't think that included everything. It was like $450,000, yeah. And... but that's... but then, if you go through Okra, you have to pay more because of union wages, and there's... so that bid is significantly higher with going through Okra. But we still are saving a lot of money with... because by the time you add the waters... wireless water meters on there, that's... those were expensive as well, so...
Exactly, yeah, that's why... I mean, if we don't get the grant, but we got to fix the filter, I wanted to know how much just that would be without the system.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, with that, this meets the requirements of the public hearing.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll wrap up the hearing. Thank you very much.
Well, now, you need us to also approve a fair housing ordinance to apply for this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything you want to... would want to state in that?
Well, yes, your current ordinance goes back more than 10 years.
Yeah.
And there was... we're changing this only for one new paragraph that has to be included now in your fair housing ordinance. So it's not just you, it's every community that hasn't passed this new language.
Right.
So I didn't know if your city attorney advised you to just amend your current or just approve a whole new ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should just prove a new.
Yeah.
It's just...
Either way.
It makes it clear.
But that really is what it's about.
Okay, all right, all right. And that's basically just your... we have to... we're obligated to do these anyways. Basically, it says we don't want to discriminate for numerous reasons, and that's...
And the beauty of this ordinance, basically, it says, "The city of Montpelier does not have the resources to deal with the legal ramifications of fair housing discrimination."
Yeah.
So that you will refer any future cases to the Indiana Civil Rights Commission. So it's kind of, you have a policy, but your enforcement is taken care of by somebody else.
Okay, and then... Statement... okay, statement of priority, that's... was that something else we need to vote on too? Is that it?
You all said...
Well, let's talk... I emailed the ordinance to everybody. Was there any questions on the ordinance? Do we want a motion to go ahead and approve the ordinance as presented?
I'll make a motion to per the ordinance.
Okay, Michael motioned.
I'll second.
Gary second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post. And then we also have a statement of community need. Basically, it says that we cannot pay for this project without Okra, which we... which we can't. So... I can read it if... Okay. This is part of our grant that we have to do this. It says, "The mayor and city council of Montpelier, Indiana recognizes the need to provide citizens with a reliable water source and quality water. Having good taste, clean, affordable water improves the quality of life in our community. We recognize that there are infrastructure issues facing the city water utility that must be dealt with. This grant application for a water utility improvement project will help our city accomplish its goal and is the number one priority of the city of Montpelier. The city of Montpelier is not financially capable for this project entirely on its own. Without a CB... CDBG funding, this project will not move forward. If funded, the mayor and city council of the city of Montpelier pledges that it will remain all grant-funded improvements for a period of five years following construction and completion and closeout of the grant." Do we have a motion to approve that statement?
I'll make a motion, we approve that statement.
Travis motioned.
I'll second.
John second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, well, is that it?
If I could, there are a few other documents that need to be signed, Mayor.
Yes.
If the council could simply give you authorization...
Okay.
...to sign those documents and any future documents that are required...
Okay.
...to get the application turned in.
Okay, very good, all right. Do we...
This Thursday, this...
Yes.
And then we have the full application, this...
Better late than never.
Yeah, I know, I know. So...
I'll make a motion that allows the mayor to sign all legal document... documents for the approval of the Okra grant.
Okay, Travis motioned.
That's a mouthful.
Made a motion.
Set it up well.
Yes, yes, that was good, that was good.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Corey second.
All right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coast. Okay, all right, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, we're very... okay, we're done with the Okra hearing part. Okay, yeah, on to... now we've got our agenda, and I have a couple of issues or a couple... no, issues, but a couple of things I need to add. Bill Smith wants to make some comments or some things. So I need to add a mainstream update and Arbor Day proclamation.
Are you doing those under... unfinished?
Bill Smith will be new business. The proclamation would be new business. The update... mainstream update would be old business. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, Corey motioned.
I'll second.
Gary second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We did not approve... okay, here we are, here we are with the next agenda. The minutes, is that on here?
Number four.
Is that agenda? Oh, that's just the regular meeting, okay. Okay, I guess it is the agenda. Okay, that's the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes from March 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 10th.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Coast. All right, new business, Bill Smith.
Okay. I have several things for you tonight. On June 5th, at 6 o'clock at your fire station, Norfolk and Southern Railroad will be here putting on a program entitled Railroad Emergencies 101. So everybody's invited to attend. Along with that, in November, we haven't set a date for this yet because we need a place. Our comprehensive emergency plan, we have to put... we have to test the plan every year. And it'll be a tabletop, it'll be here in Montpelier, and the agenda will be a railroad emergency within the city limits of Montpelier. In other words, a train wreck. The train wrecks in downtown Montpelier. We'll be going through what to do. And the railroad has... will be in attendance to that, and we'd like to have everybody participating for that.
What date is that again?
We don't have a date set yet because I have to wait till after June...
Okay.
...after this one to set the date, to write the plan and...
The other one is June 10th?
June... June 5th.
June 5th, okay, and...
It's the first Thursday of June.
Okay, and that...
It's a Thursday, not your regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. And it'll be at the fire station, and we will probably have a pretty extensive crowd because Bobby's inviting...
What time is it?
6 o'clock.
Are you providing dinner? I'm joking.
Well...
I should have fundraising dinner, save it.
I talked to Bobby about supplying the coffee. Then, I was in meetings most of the morning. I have a gentleman who is qualified to do a CERT class, which is the civilian emergency response team. I have been trying to get this together for five years, ever since I took office, and every time I try to get it going, I fall off a ladder.
Stay away from ladders.
Yeah, I injured myself. I've had more surgeries in the last five years to talk about. But if you are interested in taking this class, or if you know somebody that does, I would... I would encourage everybody to take the class. It is good if there is an emergency.
Thank you.
I guarantee you, people do not know what to do during an emergency. They generally do the wrong thing. So we'd like to train as many people as possible. They can take... we can take 20 in a class at a time. I have been working with some other schools to see if we can't teach it in the schools to get some of our kids interested in emergency services, police, fire, so forth. So we're working on that. Also, during the conversation this morning, we talked about church safety awareness. One of the churches in Hartford City is actually putting... implementing a church safety program. If you are interested in that, we would be happy to have discussions with any of your churches. My church is down at 18 and 1, and we have had actually people stop in after the service to beg for money, which I don't give them because I'm stingy. And you never know when they're going to pull a gun. So we would like to encourage people to consider church safety programs for your... for your church. It's an awareness anyway for people. That's all I got. Any questions for me?
So you... right, as of right now, you don't... the CERT program, you do not have like a date or anything set up?
For the CERT program? No, we're... we've started the conversation.
Just conversation. So anybody who's interested though to contact you and...
If you are interested in taking the class, I'd be more than happy. Also, I forgot, forgot to pass these out.
I think I have enough for anybody. I need to keep one for myself. I haven't got a copy of this.
I've got one. I think I've got one. We have a bunch here, Bill.
I only got one for myself.
I think there's enough right there, maybe around the table, thank. Here, Bill.
Brad, did I give you...
Yeah, yeah.
I gave you one of these. Yeah, you were part of the conversation.
Yep.
You helped plan, in fact. This is off the FEMA site, you can go to the FEMA website and pick this up. It's really good. If there is an emergency, I am going to Richmond next month for an all-day conference on debris management cleanup. And it will be a tremendous job to get everything picked up, to clear the streets and so forth. So this is a plan. FEMA came up... you were at the meeting, at the...
Oh, yeah.
The FEMA meeting, okay. Came up and clued us in on this, about how to pick things up in an orderly fashion. And this gives you an outline, and we'd like to get this out to the public, of how to put the stuff out in front of your house so it can be picked up orderly. In other words, probably day one, we'll pick up garbage, because there's going to be a lot of garbage, and it has to be taken to the landfill. So the next day, or the next truck comes through, we pick up construction debris or vegetation, which that stuff can be burnt, and we need to... and we have places picked out, and if you... you have a copy of the plan. So if anybody wants a copy of the debris plan, they can get it from you.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we want to do this in orderly fashion. We'd like to get this out to the public and let them know. So if you have any public organizations, your church group, whatever, I'd be willing to come and discuss this with them and give them a heads up on how we would want to do this, or in any type of emergency situations. Okay? Questions?
Thank you.
All right. Excuse me, I need to get home. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, okay. Next on the agenda, we have... actually, I'll just do my proclamation here. We are in the process of applying to be a Tree City USA. We have to join the National Arbor Society to do that, and one of the requirements is that we make a National Arbor Day proclamation. My wonderful wife is heading this up for on Arbor Day, actually, the day after Arbor Day. We are going to have a tree planting at the Fireman's Park, and we'll celebrate that, and there's going to be a tree giveaway. Do you want to talk about it? No? Okay, all right. And so, we're going to... we're going to plant... what type of tree are we planting?
It's an autumn blaze.
Autumn blaze, okay. Yeah, we... I tell you, this has been quite an education. Oh, you heard us. Okay, we're going to plant an autumn blaze, and we're going to then give a... give away a flowering tree as well for anybody who attends. So that'll be Saturday, April 26th, at 5:00 p.m. And that's going to be a fun day, so it'll be beautiful time down at the park and putting a new tree in, and somebody's going to get a nice tree as a result. So please plan to attend that. But I'm also... I'm going to read this proclamation that day, but also need to get this approved by our city council. Basically, it says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, that the trees are a vital resource for our community, enhancing our city's beauty, cleaning out air and water, and providing essential habitats for wildlife. Planting trees reduces erosion, conserves energy, increases property values, and produces and provides spaces for recreation and community well-being. And then, I do... I, Brad Neff, Mayor of Montpelier, proclaim the last day of Friday as Arbor Day. I urge the citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by planting trees and caring for trees. So this is our proclamation. I'd like to get a motion to have the council approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve your proclamation for Arbor Day.
Okay, John motioned.
I'll second.
Okay, Corey second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
What time was that on the 26th?
5 o'clock. Yeah, Saturday, 5 o'clock. Yep, so, yeah, yeah. So... Thanks, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a community complaint of someone parking their dump truck on the road, and they have suggested, I think it's been previously debated, to require semis, dump trucks, and other heavy trucks, vehicles to be... not to park on the city streets. We have designated a lot that used to be the old Solar Globe Parking Lot on Monroe Street as a place where people can park their vehicles, and then they can just then go home from there. Like to get comments. Obviously, we're not prepared to do an ordinance today, but is this something you guys want to do, or what's your comments on this?
So I think the issue we ran into last time, as well as when we were talking about it, was there was only like three or four total trucks that were around town that were being parked, and, you know, is that really that big of an issue? I mean, if just one person's complaining, like, what's their complaint? Is it blocking their line of sight? Is it out directly in front of their home, or... or what? What?
It does buckle the streets. We had dump trucks lined up down High Street to get to the places they were doing the separation project, and you could see the street buckle. And we had some going down Jefferson, cutting corners, and going over the handicap assesses. There was something else he said. It's more than one complaint about heavy vehicles.
But the one going over the handicap, that's driving, not parking.
That's true. That's not parking.
And, you know, you're saying High Street, how many dump trucks were parked there? Was it one or...
No, it was like five.
So, see, there you go, you're good. But, I mean, feel free to discuss, I've just...
Yeah, no, I appreciate the input. I really...
I don't know how many... how many trucks do we... I know there's one... I know there's one, right out my window, I see every day.
No kidding, okay.
That's parks there all the time.
Oh, that's right.
So.
That's right, I forgot about that one.
I mean, but, it doesn't bother me anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
But it may bother somebody else.
There, there is one on Green Street, right around the corner.
Oh, yeah, there.
And that does create a blind spot, um, and then if you have people parking on both sides of the street and there's kids.
Same one, it's the same.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, and I'm related to them, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm in favor of, I've even had this discussion myself with, about parking out there.
Okay.
Did it one time and then decided not to do it again, so, but I'm, I'm in favor of doing something like that just because of kids crossing streets, people pulling out and blind spots and. I, I, I mean, if it's just one or two, I'm still in favor of parking out there.
Yeah, coming off my street to Green Street, it's a blind spot either way, just because there it is, they are parked on both sides and they're parked all the way up to the corner to where you can't see around them. There's several places like that in town where.
I'd just like to avoid, it only takes one, one accident or incident, if we could avoid it, I'm all for it.
Do you wanna give community feedback for the next month and then, or do you mean just to go ahead and ask attorney to get an ordinance drafted?
I'll make a motion to do an ordinance.
Okay, okay, so you may go ahead and get, you know, I, I can just do an ordinance and we can.
Need a motion for that, but, and there's, you say you don't get a month of public input, well, we have a month to our next meeting. If we have an ordinance, then we can decide then whether we pass it or not.
Okay, okay.
So I think it's a good idea to have it and then we can get some public input.
Definitely put something in the paper stating that this will be open to the public discussion for the next meeting. We'll have an ordinance in hand, if he can accommodate that.
I'll put it on Facebook.
But I do think it should be in the paper and, yeah, on, and on social media.
Yep, okay, yeah.
You know, any heavy machinery, dump trucks, semi trucks should, will need to be parked or.
Right.
Whatever the fine, fineing is for it, or whatever.
Okay.
We need to make that clear.
Ask anybody to come and state their case some next council meeting.
But I think the people that are complaining too should come and complain, and, and not necessarily complain, but let us know what their reasoning is behind their complaints, like the main reason. Is it just, oh, it's an eyesore, I don't like it, or is it a blind spot, like Gary said, or is it?
Or a safety issue.
Or are they leaving at three in the morning and it wakes them up every time they start their truck and let it warm up, or whatever? I think that's fair.
Okay, alright, well, um, I will go ahead and get an ordinance drafted and, and, uh, I'll send that out to everybody and we'll ask for input next month. Okay, unfinished business, um, we, several months ago, we talked about an energy savings credit for, um, the solar panel project, and, um, the mainstream has recommended that we use TransTax Advisors, and their estimate is, um, not mainstream, um, Buregy, Buregy, uh, who's, who brought that through, um, recommended that we use, um, TransTax, TransTax Advisors. Their estimate for preparing this document, it was a hundred and five thousand dollar return, is twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We got an estimate from Baker Tilly for this for twenty-three thousand dollars. So it'd be a, a net, well, I don't know what math is on that, I guess it would be a, a net if it would use Baker Tilly of eighty-two thousand, is that right? Yeah, eighty-two, thank you, I might count. Alright, yes, eighty-two thousand dollars, so, um, we have to do that this council meeting because the applicator, we have to s- at least get started on that, or no, the applications are due in May, so, um, I have talked with, um, several other financial advisors, including the one we use, uh, Jim Higgins, and he does not do this type of applications, is specifically a, some type of specialty. Um, I've actually, I have talked with many people, asked them to do this and give me a bid, and the only two I've got is Baker Tilly and, uh, TransTax Advisors.
I, I, I'm familiar with Baker Tilly, I, I'd recommend him.
Yeah, yeah, okay, do you wanna make a motion then, or do we do that?
Sure, I'll make a motion, use Baker Tilly.
Okay, Gary motions we use Baker Tilly to use, uh, for our energy savings, go second.
I'll second.
Okay, John's second, all in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, mainstream update, um, they're still, missed another deadline, because April fifteenth is, was their last projection. But they were saying that basically, again, they're, they're saying AEP is causing them to, for delays. They said, "The last bit of make-ready," this is, uh, this is what Mike Wilson from, uh, mainstream, uh, wrote to me. Um, he said, "The last bit of make-ready is slated for four fifteen from AEP. Immediately after that, we will start connecting our backbone on the east side to what we, we, we worked around by, worked around with by going underground. Then we will connect the east side homes and businesses." And I said, "How long, or, when do you have, what do you have a completion date?" He said, "About forty-five to sixty days," so that would be middle of June. So that's, that's our update, so I still, east side people are waiting, and I'm, I am jumping at the bigs, I'm, I'm ready to get new internet service.
Have they given any idea of how many people they've actually hooked up in town so far?
No, I'm not asking.
We actually had a rep call the fire department to ask us about if we were interested in changing over. And then, so then we called AT&amp;T and the AT&amp;T rep basically gave us the, the idea, like they're gonna just drop, once mainstream's set up, they're just gonna drop people in Montpelier.
Oh, they're dropping Montpelier?
That's, that's the way they've talked, so, I mean.
It wouldn't surprise me, because I, I had, my brother is, when, last time he had work done on AT&amp;T, the, the contractor who worked on it said, "They are not putting any money into the, into their, their equipment anymore and they're basically just giving up," um, so, I get, take that for what it's worth, I mean, that's from, from someone that repair people. But that's, that's why.
Somebody on the phone that, you know, may not even be familiar with this area, but they're just telling us that, so.
Right, but that's, that's so, there's a couple of people have said that, so, uh, well, mainstream would be a huge upgrade. I mean, that's, it's huge, it's gonna be so much better than AT&amp;T, it is much, so much better than AT&amp;T. Does anybody else have, um?
Corey said he has.
I do, and they've already hiked the rate up ten dollars.
No kidding?
Yeah, that's if you don't do automatic billing.
Yeah.
Oh, so if you do automatic billing, it's?
Yeah, I do automatic billing, but.
It's still ten dollars more? So how much are you paying?
I got the highest and it's like ninety-nine dollars.
Okay. And that, is that for?
If you do credit card pay, it'll do like five dollars, I have that ten dollars. If you do auto pay discount, it'll take the ten dollars off.
It'll be eighty-nine if it was auto pay, okay.
But that started May first.
Okay.
Mike talked about this last week, but we don't have mainstream yet.
Well, that's, and that's for the best service, you know, are you pretty happy with that service or?
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
I'm paying ninety-two for, uh, AT&amp;T, whatever, and that's, that does include a phone line. Uh, so that's pretty expensive, so that's, um.
Yeah, that's good.
But, um, but you guys have any other thoughts on this, or do you? Yes, that's, that's the update, so, um, next meeting is May twelfth, six P M, and, uh,
I'm gonna make a motion when you adjourn.
Okay, Travis motion, adjourned.
I'll second it.
Okay, and Michael's second, alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.